We're live. The OPI committee act is posted on the wall in the room. Uh, roll call.
Pauling?
Here.
Buckminster? Rob?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Reckless?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Clayton? We have four.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is the government of this country, one nation, united we are, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have a much of a merit report, a beauty ministry report.
Well, a whole lot. They're still working down on the court. Watts um is onsite getting ready to term to go up the downtown alleys. So we got notifications out on that. So some of the alleys between on Stone and Harland will be between Stone and Harland and Stone and Chase will be shut down for periods of time with limited access. But we're coordinating that with all the property owners and trying to keep everybody apprised of where they're at and moving along. So they're not for sure dead set on timelines. So we're kind of working through through those pieces. We had, we'll probably have an insurance claim that we're going to be submitting. The new water line that we put in um under the river that we've born through off the railroad bridge. They have a tent bridge down there to build a new bridge. And with the floodwaters created a scour and our water line is now about a hundred feet of it's hanging midway in the river because it's scoured out about fifteen feet below or ten feet below where we're at. We were ten feet below bottom of river um previously. But so we're got the engineers engaged there, try to figure out how we're going to do that and whether that'll be an insurance claim or what it's going to be. But that'll be a like five hundred, sixteen thousand dollar project that we just got done that we get to do again, unfortunately. Um, really that's all I got.
She don't have anything. Uh, consent agenda, the minister's approval for July first, twenty twenty four, agenda approval, claims approval for July twenty second through, I mean June twenty second through July fifth. Crayser's report, consent agenda.
Second.
All vote.
Five yeas.
There's no old business will move to new regular business discussion.
James, did you vote on that one? I have five up there. Let's think on five. Are you a yeas?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I did.
Six yeas. Sorry.
Discussion. Fall City Head Quarter Report for the second quarter twenty twenty four.
Hello, Luke Special, Fall City Head, trying to run through quarterly report here for April May and June. Uh, top priority still is, uh, you know, some electrical infrastructure. Uh, still got some grant money through the state. Uh, working on finalizing some stuff for that. Um, we've also been working on, uh, engineer has been hired Midwest Engineering uh to complete some um some roadway and utility infrastructure, also a wetland delineation. This is the north commercial corridor, uh, north town where that thirty third street was built. Um, within this, trying to figure out if there's any sort of way to do a southern access there, you know, where that water flows. Um, delineation report, trying to figure out if it's even feasible to do a southern access there. So we'll figure out some more info on that. Um, you know, with these, uh, attended the Site Selector Guild Annual Conference when these things come up. Uh, if I've never attended them, they've got scholarship opportunities. So submitted a random scholarship. Uh, was able to attend that as a scholarship recipient. So just had to pay for some travel and some hotel. Uh, fifty nine of the nation's kind of top site selectors are there. So really just out there, just kind of networking, you know, letting them know what opportunities exist down here and that we're, you know, going after um some of these emerging markets and ag, letting them know that Fall City is open for business. Um, the land bank creation, gave a little presentation at the Nebraska Investment Finance Authorities, um, positively impacting housing development um back in April. So just another way to kind of let them know what Fall City's got going on, kind of sell Fall City a little bit, uh, attend that as a speaker. Um, also attended the ten thirty one exchange seminar um in Lincoln with Dan Ferguson Dong Sun, who gave us a basically looking at, you know, ten thirty one exchanges are where the, a lot of the farmers utilize those um for some tax breaks. And oftentimes they'll go buy other ag land. There's also ways that they could possibly sell their ag land and purchase land within city limits for possible commercial development. So just trying to educate ourselves on, you know, ten thirty one exchanges, what options there there are available for, you know, possibly diversifying someone's portfolio, um, utilizing those uh those options. Um, attended a couple other uh, our NIDA Annual Conference, Nebraska Economic Development Association. Uh, there's this regional partnership that uh Nebraska Chamber and Department of Economic Development is working on, basically these six regions and trying out how we can coordinate with um the folks in the southeast region um on different projects, attended one of those seminars. Um, Champions Crossing subsidiary of Edge um owns the housing development, South of the Hospital, has approved basically what is a five percent rebate program. So if you're to purchase a lot out of Champions Crossing and you build a five hundred thousand dollar house, you can get a five percent rebate off the cost of your house. So five hundred thousand dollar house, get twenty five percent rebate off the cost of your lot, up to the cost of the lot, um, designed to try to incentivize people um to build houses, um, you know, in town and and at that at that potential development. Um, kicked off um this community's local energy action program. Uh, this is a program through the Department of Energy, submitted a grant for that. They're basically, we've got access to some of these experts who kind of know the um electrical infrastructure, some of the emerging markets in renewables, um, access to some of their uh expertise on some of the stuff we're doing. With that also came a fifty thousand dollar um basically fund that we can use um to try to help, you know, advance some of our electrical needs. And so um working with Anthony and Trevor on some of that stuff. Um, so the best part about that is, is that, you know, federal government recognizes us as energy burden. And the fact that we're connected with the Department of Energy right now, the fifty thousand dollars is great, we're going to put that to good use. But simply being connected to the DOE and some of the needs that we have right now, there's money out there, the federal government is looking to invest either through grants or for loans. And so the fact that we're connected with DOE, DOE, and they know that Fall City, uh, we can tell our story then, should help with further applications if the opportunity presents itself. Uh, that Willimere Falls three housing project is complete. I think as of maybe last week, a week and a half ago, they had eight of the sixteen units um occupied. You got to be fifty five years and older, there is an income threshold. Um, there's also with that new development, there's, has been created some flooding issues out there. Uh, you know, Edge, Edge, Champion Crossing is not the owner of of what's being flooded, but we are the original developers. And so we're working with Excel Development, um, and also some locals that have expertise and drainage around here, um, trying to help Excel Development as much as we can, uh, to try to fix that flooding. Uh, there's more of a watershed than maybe what was predicted um by the engineers that that originally engineered that, um, which would have been Excel's project. Uh, but we're just helping them. So if you hear of any flooding going on out there, um, it's definitely happening. And um, it's not good, I mean, people don't want to live in places that flood. So we're we're on it, we're working with some local contractors, hopefully that have got some good plans uh to fix that. Uh, you know, I feel, I feel sorry for the folks out there that are experiencing that, but we're, we're, we're going to help mitigate that for the future. And Excel Development is, they're, they're connected on this, they understand the issue, and I think they're willing to make that investment to fix it and take care of those headaches. Fingers crossed. Um, so we've also, we're working on some rural workforce housing fund project, build this house, working through the Housing Board, um, through that, we'll hopefully come to you with the project here, uh, sooner than later. Uh, southeast, that southeast Nebraska Land Bank now owns kind of four properties. We're working on trying to market those online. Um, we've got a little template for a website, um, where we can kind of show where those properties are, um, potential price that they would be available for sale if someone wanted to build something. That would come with a developer's contract where, you know, if you buy one of these properties, you know, you just want to sit on them, we want to see them developed, you know, to add, um, you know, basically uh revenue to the city's rolls. Um, we attended a land bank luncheon to learn more, try to network with other communities that are doing this. Um, and we're also working on an asset modernization grant, update some of the guidelines. This was originally introduced in twenty fourteen, and we're just kind of updating some of the language. Hopefully next quarter have some more info um to share for businesses in Richardson County that can apply for that when they upgrade some of their technology or production equipment. Um, Community Medical Center is working towards this community kids center. Um, really want to give a big thank you to the hospital, they're really championing this this childcare issue. Um, we think we're on a good, um, a good, in a good place to try to, we've avoided disaster and hopefully, you know, keep creating um spots for for these working folks that need childcare. Uh, presented at Humboldt Timber Rock Steener towards the end of the year on my post-secondary prep program, you know, we're, you know, just our western, western Richardson County folks over there, just keeping them up to date on projects and opportunities, uh, workforce stuff. Um, so the Nebraska Chamber hosted a Nebraska Immigration and Workforce Summit um in Fremont um in uh in June. And, you know, we've, everything that we hear, you know, power is obviously a top priority, but workforce is a close second. And, and what we have, what we have kind of found out is that immigration is, is a big time struggle. And the, what I mean by that is the companies that are able to, to bring in immigrants, um, they are large, large companies that basically have the resources to do it. Um, one of the lawyers, you know, we owe it to our employers around here to at least explore the, the idea of that. But it just kind of reaffirmed to me that, you know, these small towns, there's so much that goes into immigration and trying to bring in, um, you know, the infrastructure, the schools, do you have it? Do you have bilingual speakers? Do you have grocery stores that sell the right products that these folks are used to? Um, and, and there's this matrix that Nebraska Chamber has kind of put out that shows how to ready your town if you're interested in something like that. And, you know, we're just, we're just not there. It's, it's, we, we need workforce, we know that. And if we keep working on our housing, um, you know, I think we can grow our workforce organically, if you will. Um, and, and there's other communities that are, that are going to make the immigration thing work. Um, but right now, if we just keep working on our, our housing, we should be able to hopefully grow workforce organically. Um, immigration, it's just, there's a ton of resources. And the lawyer that got up and gave, you know, this presentation, she used, she used the phrase, well, that can be possible discrimination about twelve to fifteen times. And I think some of those things really deter businesses from taking a chance um on immigration because there's, you really got to keep an eye on your, you know, what you're doing and make sure you're doing it legally. And, and sometimes you just don't have the resources for it. So, um, you know, for the benefit of our employers, we are, we continue to look at this stuff. Um, but immigration is a real big challenge, and a lot of the other Nebraska communities are, are kind of, kind of seeing that. But there are some communities that are trying to take the steps for that. Um, we're going to continue to do what we can on our housing. Um, we think that that might be a good pathway forward. Um, we also hosted some representatives from S, from Senka to talk about potential partnerships for housing. Um, and so, you know, childcare, housing and power infrastructure is, you know, continues to be kind of top priorities. That's a QT review. Q, Q two review. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yes.
Number two, discussion, consideration to sell two R O W parcels totaling one tenth of an acre along thirty third street in the north property line of the pack grad storage.
Ron Jordan. So I'm here on behalf of Ron Jordaning. Um, as we were looking at, you know, he's got a little, a little parcel there that's, well, he owns pack rat storage and was looking at maybe some entrance uh into pack rat. He's got a little spot there that's connected to the highway that could potentially be some sort of development. Um, and so when, when working with him, I just suggested, Ron, why don't we try to maybe clean this up? Um, you know, he wasn't so sure about it. And just after some conversations, um, I just asked him, I go, if I was to present the city council on your behalf, you know, would you be interested, you know, in, in buying that, these two little triangles that you can see on, on your, on your packet there? It basically just, it's a tenth of an acre. Um, he's willing to take care of all the, you know, the surveying that needs to go, uh, feeds and kind of talked about a price. And, you know, just, he, he's not so sure if he, he needs to buy them. Um, he could probably maybe make it in there. But I just told him, I said, this would be a good way to clean it up. Um, it's fifteen hundred dollars that would come the city's way. Um, it, it really just kind of cleans everything up. So.
You got a question on that one? Because when he offered it, he offered twenty five hundred.
Yep.
How you get down to fifteen?
So the original offer, the original number that he was comfortable paying was twenty five hundred. And um after talking to him, you know, talking about sharing the cost of filing it or uh sharing the cost of surveying, just try to deduct some of those things from twenty five. So that fifteen would be the offer for the land. And then some of those other costs that go into, uh, you know, filing it or whatever. So that's the offer. He just wants to maybe get, um, you know, if city council would be open to that, or, you know, maybe they think they need to get a little more, does the city have to go out for bids, all that stuff. This is just kind of an introduction to kind of cleaning that up a little bit.
But he's willing to pay for all the expenses to make this transaction happen.
He's willing to take care of all the other expenses, which, which could be maybe a little under twenty five.
You're going to have to have a survey, and that's a couple hundred bucks in it myself.
Survey, yeah, a few hundred.
You got to get your title, or you got to get the abstract.
Right.
There's some expenses in it. But if it's, if it's no, no cost to us, then that makes up. Otherwise, if you split it, you'd talk about probably five hundred bucks in it myself.
That's, that's kind of what I tried to, I tried to deduct from twenty five and try to get somewhere closer there. So, you know, if the council wanted to make a counteroffer or however that needs to work, um, I can help relay that message.
So how would it work with selling a property to a private entity? Um, so it would go through, there's a wait period. So the council adopted a resolution saying, you know, if you're going to relinquish property or sell the property, um, and it would, I don't remember the timeframe of it, it's got to be posted that we are selling the property. Um, and it gives time period for public comment, essentially, uh, within that, that period of time. It's like it's thirty, thirty to forty five days, I believe, actually, overall, if I remember right. So, essentially, we'd have to come back with a, a resolution, um, at the next meeting or something if we wanted to sell those. The parcels, I think, originally were, when they put through right away for thirty third street, just kind of some triangle little pieces that were left over. But there wasn't any planned access or anything from Jordaning. So Jordy really wasn't involved with any of that component. It was mainly all real fire, um, at C M C to the north, uh, which is why their lines are straight through. And then we had those little pieces to, to deal with. And we just ended up acquiring those through that, through that right away purchase when we, when we did the street. It's actually was C M C's right away initially.
Initially, and then they donated it to the city.
C M C's property.
C M C's property originally donated to the city for the road. This is that little piece triangle from the, you know, the curvature up north, a little bit from thirty third street that's left over. There's two of those little pieces that are left. So just, it kind of cleans it up. Hopefully it encourages maybe some future development on there, uh, to add some real estate, you know, value where currently there's, you know, crops planted maybe someday.
I got some digital conversations with me to then bring back a resolution after next meeting. That's kind of the, until we want to, I didn't have an action item on this because it's really can't take it in action with it without a, without a resolution. But.
And you'll have to have a public hearing.
Um.
As a resolution, unfortunately.
Not a hearing, no, it just gets posted. It can't get tran, the transaction can't close until after that public comment period. But there actually is no public hearing for it.
They get, there's the same thing as public comment, isn't it? It'd be an action item. So you'd have to entertain your.
We just have to post it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have to put through general circulation of what's, what the council has taken action on. And if, if someone contests it or, or a component there, then that item will come before council.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Discussion and action, resolution authorizing the sale of real property and execution of the sales documents for the property at two twenty one West Sixteenth Street, senior citizen center, four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
All right. So I've got to keep you guys priced at this for a while. Um, we're talking about that building and the little amount of city funding that's been through it and now it's, you know, utilization that's, is within it. Uh, it's currently, we're releasing to Blue Rivers. Um, it operates the current meals on wheel services. And then Region Five or Upaze have reached out to us about looking for a facility for their operations. And we can let Mike.
Yep.
Right? Uh, come up and, and talk on, on their behalf. But so, so we got to talk through it. They've done some inspections on the building, uh, came up with, with an offer. And so we bring before council to take a look at that and see how that's functions with the operations that are in there now. Um, I put Blue Rivers in, into, into contact with, with the pace. So they're coordinating directly, um, together for those items, um, and handling that piece. So, uh, Mike, you want to introduce yourself?
Yep, I'm Mike Jones. I'm the area director for Upaze, which used to be Region Five. Uh, my area is Richardson County, Neemah, Johnson, and uh, Plone County. Right now, we are transferring everybody to Auburn for our day service operation. Uh, but we have currently eleven individuals in Richardson County, ten of those live in Fall City. Well, one's, a couple of them are rural Fall City, one's in Humboldt. But, um, instead of having transport, and we're just wanting to grow in this area, we have people at Rulo and other that were interested in services, but they didn't want to be transported to Auburn every day, Monday to Friday. So that's the main reason we were looking, been trying to find something fall. See, I've been here a year. There hasn't been anything come up. So I heard about this opportunity. So that's where we're at there. Um, any questions on that? I mean, basically, the day center will be used for, they'll probably be at one time between five and ten people is all. So we're going to be really small here. Uh, they'll spend half the time in the day center doing classes, like computer classes, cooking classes, arts and crafts. And the other half of the time, we'll try to be out in the community. I have no idea what's available. And Fall City area, I'll be admit, I'm New Nebraska, so I don't know a whole lot. Uh, we try to get them out of the service center as much as possible. Obviously, winter time, that's not, not much of an option. But, um, any questions on what we, I mean, I, does everybody, I guess, know what we do? We, we provide uh day residential services for adults with developmental disabilities. Uh, actually, we have one group home here in Fall City. Uh, and we, like I said, we transport, we have eleven people we actually serve in Richardson County, but they all have to be transported. And we did talk with Blue Rivers. We had a, my CEO and myself, we had a Zoom meeting with them a couple, three weeks ago. Um, we're still open to all those ideas, we just have some HIPAA concerns because the state came in and did a survey, like when we were in Auburn, there was a parent of an individual who was there all the time because of some health issues with that individual. And they had some real issues about HIPAA violations with having somebody else in the building. So I talked to the survey lady from the state just a couple of weeks ago. She didn't see there'd be an issue, but she was going to get with her supervisor and I having her back. So that would be the biggest catching point, you know, as far as us leasing, continue to lease to them. But I, I don't see no issue with that coming out because we were looking at remodeling anyway. So if nothing else, we could get it where it's all separated and there wouldn't be that violation. So.
Uh, purchase agreement has went through legal, already went through one revision, and this time is, we signed by a, a pace for execution. So we did bring, bring before council the resolution. Um, Upaze is a public entity, so it allows the city to go directly to that without all that advertisement component that we just talked about in the last item. So with being a public entity, you can just make a resolution to go directly to them for whatever sale price and this. No, no, I guess, public comment component besides what happens right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Six yeas.
Discussion and action, resolution authorizing city to access unpaid vacant property registration fees totaling seven hundred and fifty dollars for the property at twenty two twelve Island Avenue.
All right. Um, a couple meetings ago, we talked about this, we're going to have quite a few of these coming across. Um, anybody that hasn't been compliant with registering their property as being vacant, um, and has, you know, the first two rounds of uh registration fees uh put together. So two hundred and fifty, if it's a residential property, two hundred and fifty bucks is the, for the first six months or after the first res, initial registration is free, then a hundred eighty days later is two hundred and fifty, and then five hundred dollars every hundred eighty days after that. So this is the first round for these properties, the seven hundred, a seven hundred and fifty dollar assessment that gets, gets tied against that deed.
Motion to approve.
Six yeas.
Discussion and action, resolution authorized city to access unpaid vacant property registration fees totaling seven hundred and fifty dollars for a property at twenty four eleven.
Same thing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Six yeas.
Discussion and action, resolution authorized city to access unpaid vacant property registration fees totaling seven hundred and fifty dollars, property at nine eighteen Fulton Street.
Nothing different with that one. All right. Six yeas.
Discussion and action, resolution committing the property at fifteen oh six Stone Street to the development of an amphitheater park.
All right. So a while back, we submitted that, you know, CCC FF um grant or application to that grant, which we were, um, we did not get or we were denied that. Uh, there has been some talks with the property owners adjacent to that. Um, that's Ben Howard Owens, uh, potentially donating the rest of his property to the project. Uh, but we're chasing down a grant currently, the, was it Rural Community Recovery Program, I think is what it is, uh, which is an extra COVID money that's sitting at the state. They have, I think, uh, ten million or so that they're pushing through for Central Hub or Central Park kind of component or potentially the housing. It was more tailored towards the public entity or, or development of public properties uh for citizens rather than the housing that has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar floor. And they're typically looking at about a million dollar uh request going into that, that they're wanting to make million dollar awards. So essentially, ten, ten likely awards. Um, with creative district, we went through that. We, we've got all those concept pieces. Uh, the creative district actually got an entity to um come up with a basic concept. Uh, that wouldn't be a final concept, that's still would need to be designed. So that was within your packets, kind of showed it, and that, just an overlay of how an amphitheater park would be put together. But essentially, this grant requires government body approval. We've had the other grants submitted that the council has approved, but they wanted some directive that's direct saying this property is clearly dedicated or committed to this component to show the commitment of the city. Now, there's no match requirements right there that goes with this, just basically that, that commitment component that's, that needs to be derived. So we got some support letters from Chamber and the creative district itself, Edge, and then uh Arts and Humanities Council and uh, what's it, from D O B, uh, for, for the Walter Museum, uh, from us there for support to go along with that. The grant is due actually the twenty seconds of this month. We have send engaged to complete that as part of our, you know, uh, partnership or not partnership, our dues and stuff with them. So they're taking on that administration component, just like they would have our C D B G grants and all those. So they're going to help us throw this draft through, that application. Um, this would be one of those final pieces that would go in there. So we can get a full submitted done by the twenty second. Any questions?
Good deal. I want to make a motion to approve.
All right. Six yeas. Six yeas?
Discussion, amendment to the city code regarding the discharging of fireworks.
Well, I put this agenda item on after the long weekend, two weeks ago, and all the complaints and carry on. I tried to look up some notes that I had from last year and I couldn't find them actually. But I know we had this discussion last year, we talked about times, dates, and places. And last year, I received quite a few complaints, more than I ever have, in regards to how many days it was going on. I know that the Fourth of July was on Thursday, and so it started, I don't know when it was. Way in advance and it goes too late. And I know, talking to people that contacted me, and most of the conversations were after the Fourth. And, you know, what's the hours, we really didn't have any set hours. If all this were adjusted for state laws, we really don't have an ordinance declaring the hours. We just, we talked about noise complaints, we had this conversation last year with the police department. Their complaints last year were minimal. And so I think we sort of decided, I remember saying that if everybody was just respectful to their neighbors and didn't do this until one o'clock in the morning, then we wouldn't have to call the police department. Not everybody wants to call the police department. People were reaching out to me like, like, call PD, it's twelve-thirty, call them, you know, it's late. They don't want to do that, they don't want to stir it up, so they found it easier. And so that's why we're here. Talked to a couple of other communities about what they do locally. Talked to Humboldt a little bit last week, and they cut it off on the third and fourth, before midnight, eleven fifty-nine to be exact. During the week and during the other days, besides the third and the fourth, a lot of other communities shut off ten-thirty at night. Now, researching this, I know we had, sort of had this discussion before, and this has nothing to do with the sale of fireworks. This has to do with the exhibition of fireworks. And I believe we ought to just, so the police department doesn't get insuited and all of us council members or some of us get phone calls, maybe we ought to just, it's time to put in place the hours that you can display or exhibit or shoot out fireworks. And I don't have a proposal because I just thought I'd bring it here so we can start discussing. We have a whole year till the Fourth of July next year. But I know that there's some people here and there are people that have reached out to me that want to have some input. So I think this is just, I'm just getting the ball rolling. I don't have anything specific, which is why you find them in the packet. Personally, I think, I think seven, seven days is plenty of time for, no matter when you start it, no matter when you end it. But I, there were fireworks going off Sunday night, last night when I went for my walk, there were people still shooting off fireworks. So that's, that's just a little bit too long. And between the complaints of dog owners, elderly, little kids sleeping, it's all in my neighborhood, you know. I got all of this. And I had some veterans last year, they reached out to me and they, maybe PTSD, I don't know. They really didn't play that card, but they were upset, and there were people that slept during the day, so. Without the police station getting all sorts of calls, I think that we could just sort of just get something in black and white. And we can make it broad, so that we don't have to be specific there, you know. I mean, your holiday changes, like next year will be on a Friday, and so then you'll have a long weekend. And so, you know, ten days before or after the Fourth of July, ten days, some of that, that ten day window around the Fourth of July is what I'm looking at. Especially the hours of operation. I don't care what goes on at nine-thirty at night, but eleven-thirty, midnight, we could go Saturday night, it was one-ten, it's a little late. That's just not, that's just not being responsible and it's not being respectful for your neighbors. So that's what I'll start with.
No, you're good. I think the days, I don't, I don't mind the length of days that we have. Now, I would entertain hours, if we set something on hours, but I think the days, especially since the Fourth, just for example, this year, getting on a Thursday, a lot of families, you use the Fourth to get their families together. So having it that weekend after, you know, having it the Fourth on Thursday, even though they have a day off, they may not be able to go anywhere. They wait till that Saturday to light those fireworks. So I feel like changing the days may interfere with family gatherings, and I don't want to do that, you know. We have had this set for quite some time. And if we shorten that period, and then, and I understand, yes, days change, that makes it longer, this and that. But then if we get it so complicated in the ordinance, I don't want to do that either. So I guess, days are okay with me, but to entertain a motion for hours, I would be okay with that. Now, I could go, I don't have small children anymore, but I could go eleven PM or even midnight, especially on the third and fourth. Especially if you're working with thunderstorms and everything else that happens around that timeframe. So I guess that's what I'll put out there.
I did reach out to our list service, city managers and administrators. So I do have probably twelve or fifteen ordinances and/or policies that cities have in place that we could take a look at or could send out to council to get a look at all of those. This would be an ordinance change. So we've got the draft in ordinance, drafted amendment to our six dash three seventeen is our current ordinance that talks about the sale of fireworks and discharge, which essentially is, we follow the state timeframe of when they can be sold and then allow it to be discharged for seventy-two hours after the close of the state's sale date. But it'd be a drafted ordinance or drafted revision or amendment, go before, you know, readings, pre-readings or whoever the council would want to take a decision on that. So if it was passed, you could get that done, or you could patch it out.
It's just mainly hours.
I mean, it was just hours. I mean, the Fourth of July is on a Thursday, and I know Wednesday is, you know. Midnight, any, any time really to me after eleven o'clock, I mean, but I understand the weekends and people having house parties and all that kind of stuff. And I, sheesh, I'm liberal with it, I don't care, but there's, there's got to be a cutoff. And there has to be a time of day where you can bring your dog in and you could. Cause I don't have to be chasing everybody down all the time, so.
How hard is this to enforce? It's going to be a challenge regardless, because of your, you may have the, on the Fourth on a Thursday, but if they're celebrating this on that weekend, this is going to still be cut off at ten o'clock on the weekend too.
I think there should be a weekday and time.
Yeah.
Well, like a.
Ten PM during the weekday.
I talked to, ten, ten-thirty, and then on the third and the fourth, it was later like midnight. And I understand when you run into a weekend, and then you go, the thing is about it. Really, the only thing I'm after is, is, you know, midnight's way too late. And, you know, even eleven o'clock on a night when it's over with, like that last Sunday night, we could go Sunday night, it's eleven o'clock. And still going and going and going, and there has to be a time sooner there. You either got to pitch fireworks shut off or you just need to quit at a certain time of night. And it's just, yeah. I think some of the enforcement would help if it was posted that like the city has what the ordinance is for these people to, a hundred percent see it.
We had a lot of people from Iowa autha coming up, I mean, lots of people, I'll tell them by, and they asked if they light them off in the parks now and said, no, not on any city. But you're right, if we could have something posted or something, that would help out a lot. And in the meantime, I actually went to the city, I actually printed off Auburn's ordinance here. And there, I made copies, I didn't have one here. Auburn's is just like Bertie said here, it's eight o'clock in the morning till eleven, and on the Fourth of July, it's on the, till twelve o'clock. So, and you know, I don't know if it'd be a bad thing, you know, Fourth of July at twelve o'clock, how are you going to regulate the Fourth of July? I mean, it'd be a tough one to do, but through the week wise, I mean. I've talked to quite a few people about it, the difference was, you know, somebody's trying to sleep, you know, at night, and I work night shift, and they're mowing the yard next day, so what's the difference? So pros and cons both ways on it. But I think on the, like baker's side of it, you know, if you put something in ordinance, you know, just say it's eleven o'clock on a weekday, hopefully, everybody respects it and they quit lighting through the weekend. It didn't happen though.
Well, last, last year, it got a little lippy, that's what we had discussion last year. But this year, in all the years I've been on council, this is the first time that it's, I've gotten so many complaints and they were all justified. And most of it was in my neighborhood, you know, I mean, that's why they were reaching out to me, but it's, well, one-ten, you know, in the morning, was, was, was too late, and that woke me up. And so, you know, I got all these fans going and everything else, it's hard for me to even hear anything. It was a pretty good boom, and when you roll over and you see this one, that's just way too late. It's just way too late.
They started lighting down my neighborhood, the twenty-fifth could heal. I guess they thought they weren't going to be there the Fourth.
Well, I, we, you know, we want to publish statutes of the, I don't want to affect the sales of it, I don't want to affect anything else. And Carter's right, the days don't really bother me at either. People got that much money, they want to go for ten days, and but we just have to have a curfew with it and just, you know. We can talk more about it later when the rest of the council's here maybe, and we'll put it back up and maybe that could be more specific. But between now and then, everybody's come up with an idea. But I, I think on the, whether it's the third or the fourth, and I really think it should be, it should be ten-thirty. You know, on those odd days.
I think you only do it, phrase it, the third and the fourth, and weekends until midnight, and then any other day, weekday, ten.
Just as long as there's some sort of a curfew, we get it in black and white, so we don't have to go through this again and again.
I think the perspective might get on the clock though, is that like, the, all the fireworks shows that like went on in like some of the communities, they started at nine forty-five because that's like the earliest that you can see them, with it being so dark. So I think, I think that would be a complaint that you get at ten is like, oh, well, Humboldt started their fireworks at nine forty-five. So, but I think that the ten or ten-thirty or something like that would be reasonable. But I also, I was going to ask, did we have any, did y'all have any complaints about like barking dogs specifically? Like people calling barking dogs because of the fireworks? I don't know if that was, okay?
No.
Okay, that was another question I had.
In my house.
Yeah. What's that?
In my house.
Yeah. So, but yeah, I also agree that I'm, I don't care about the days, emergency of fireworks.
Well, they got it like seven days or so, whatever.
It's ten days, yeah. Twenty-fifth through the Fourth.
It's got to be days too, you can't shoot them off in January, can you?
No, it's just, June, twenty-fifth, July.
Ten day period.
We don't celebrate New Year's five, six days.
No, that's true.
Why should you celebrate Fourth of July ten days?
New Year's didn't give us our freedom.
Your freedom, we'll move somewhere else.
I serve this country, I'm going to stay here.
I do too.
That's why you want to light them.
Hundred, hundred percent.
Ten days, twenty days.
Hundred percent.
Wait a minute. I'll get something, I'll get something more towards, geared towards something we can, I just want to get it out there first. Everybody knows that we're thinking about, we have plenty of time to do it today.
I would just, you want to leave charge, come up with something for the next meeting.
I sure will.
Thank you. That way we don't have to do this again.
That's it.
Discussion, amendment to the city code regarding dangerous dogs. Stephen and Megan Randall.
The original agenda said that this had an action item, which we did not need an action item on this. I don't, it'll be the same thing, if we do anything, it'll be a code amendment or looking at that, so.
For just a. Stephen and Megan. Go for it. We, we're really just bringing this to the attention because I think a lot of people don't really know what the danger of dog city code really is until, just this last week, a lot of, some of you guys were here for a meeting, and I got opened up. And with what we just experienced, we think it needs some revision done to us. I don't want to go through what Megan went through and then we'll kind of go through some of the things we think should maybe be added to it. So let Megan tell the, tell the incident.
I read this last week to the Animal Control Board, and so just keep that in mind when I'm saying that my brother's here, because my brother's not, but just keep that in mind, this is what I read last week. My name is Megan Randall and I reside at twenty-one oh three Lane Street, Fall City, Nebraska. I am here today as a concerned citizen of Fall City after receiving the news that Mr. Richard Martin wanted to appeal the dangerous dog classification that was applied to one of his seven Great Danes. Since I am the person whom this dog has bitten, I would like to share my story to help you understand why I'm requesting this classification be placed on this animal. On the twelfth of June, twenty twenty-four, I left my residence to pick up a gift at my brother and sister-in-law's home at twenty-five seventeen Barrett Street. After picking, or after parking my truck on the west side of the street in front of their home, I noticed one black Great Dane running around Mr. Martin's yard. Since there was a lawnmower in the yard and the garage door was wide open, I assumed he was home. A few seconds later, I noticed that a FedEx truck had pulled up and parked right behind me. The driver got out of his vehicle and came around to the side of my truck as I was getting out of my vehicle and started talking to me. He asked if I knew to whom that dog belonged, and at that time, I replied that I did not. We started casually walking up to my brother's driveway to get to their front door as the driver of the FedEx truck, his name is Brandon, was delivering a package to my brother's home. As we approached the home, five more Great Danes came around the corner from the north side of my brother's house and swarmed around, around in front of us, blocking our path. They were all black Great Danes. Initially, they seemed to be just curious and were sniffing at us as we walked. However, I did not notice the tan Great Dane, the one in question here today, as it came running up behind me from the east. It gave no warning by barking or growling, the dog just leaped at me from behind and without warning attacked me and bit me on my upper arm. I was unprovokedly attacked while on my brother's driveway. After attacking and biting me, the tan Dane started barking loudly. That made all the other dogs anxious and they started barking as well and began quickly coming towards us. I got behind Brandon, who started using the package he was carrying to protect us and keep the dogs at a distance. After Brandon helped me get back to my truck, I asked him if I could borrow his phone because I had left mine at my house so I could call someone for help. Brandon gave me his phone and started walking back to his truck. Then three of the black Great Danes cornered him up against his FedEx truck. By waving and thrusting the package towards them, he was able to safely get into his truck. He then proceeded to pull forward right beside mine. I was able to contact my father, Joe Reares, and I asked him to come over there and take me to the Community Medical Center Emergency Room. After the phone call, I returned Brandon's cell phone and I thanked him for protecting me. He kept asking if I was okay or if I needed anything as I was pale and visibly shaken, but I told him my father was on his way and would take me to the ER. That's when Brandon left. My father and stepmother arrived within three minutes of making the call. All the dogs were still running loose and I was afraid to get out of my truck to get into my dad's car. Despite their wildly running around, I somehow managed my exit to get into my dad's car without further incident. They then took me to the ER. I was treated by the doctor who gave me a tetanus shot and placed a few stitches in the back of my right arm. They didn't want to completely close the hole where I was bitten due to the bacterial contamination and their desire to have the wound drained. I was also prescribed five days of antibiotics and told to make a follow-up appointment in another three to five days. My husband, Stephen, called the Fall City Police Department to make them aware of the situation and to tell them I wanted to file a report. Officer DeJackamo came to the ER where I filled out the report with some difficulty. My adrenaline must have been going crazy as I was still nervously shaking and my mind was in disarray. After leaving the ER with my husband, we went back over to my brother's home to retrieve the truck. All the dogs had been put away and Mr. Martin was home. My husband went over to talk to him to see what course of action would be followed regarding his dog's attack. Mr. Martin claimed that he would be doing whatever necessary action needed to be taken as he was taking this dog bite incident very seriously. He also said he needed to pray about it. He then said he planned on taking care of any of my medical bills that might result as a consequence of this dog attack. I went to my follow-up appointment the next Monday. The doctor recommended and prescribed another round of antibiotics. They also adjusted my anxiety medicine to a higher dosage as I was having great difficulty relaxing and sleeping due to the psychological trauma of this attack. I would ask that you please pursue and retain the dangerous dog classification on his tan Great Dane so this never happens again. My brother and his wife were here today to attest to the numerous times these dogs have been outside his fence, running around loose and off his property due to Mr. Martin's negligence. I am not only worried about the safety of my brother and his wife, but even more so for the safety of their two-year-old son Hudson. What was considered a single dog bite for me, an adult attacked by a dog that had left its owner's property, could have been much worse for a two-year-old had this attack happened to him. Also, there are many children who either walk or ride their bikes by Mr. Martin's house to go to the city pool during the summer or go to and from school during the school year. There are also many families that walk their babies in strollers around or near Mr. Martin's block. Mr. Martin claimed that he was taking this attack very seriously, but after hearing that he wanted to appeal this decision, I don't believe he is doing so. I realize it must be difficult for one person to own, maintain, and control seven Great Danes within our city limits. However, Mr. Martin is clearly incapable of controlling these dogs, and I fear that the next young child or another adult might not be as lucky as I was. I just pray that each and every one of you don't have to live with these what-ifs situations that I have been imagining and enduring over the past month. I trust you will all take what happened to me and my family very seriously when you discuss this situation. So with that being said, we were kinda looking at our city ordinance that we have in place now. And if some of the, some of the ways things are worded, I just think maybe need a little revision. He's kind of looked more into some of the requirements that he has to have. Um, so basically my biggest concern was, so when the attack happened to me, um, Mr. Martin got this Great Dane back, like just immediately went back to the same situation, you know, that started this whole thing. Um, what we think should happen is that dog should be impounded until he is in compliance with the city ordinance that we have in place.
I got a question. Was the dog taken and checked for rabies or anything like that?
At, when I was at the emergency room, they said, I don't know if the hospital called whoever is in charge of that, but the dogs were, or this one particularly, was up to date on his rabies.
Was never taken. Was up to date.
Was up to date, but it, the dog was never taken. Um, and so, like I said, it was still in the situation that it was. It could still get out freely.
Well, I was in conversation with, uh, Tracy Burns, the city attorney. I more talked to her because I was the one that was kinda making sure things were getting enforced. And actually, on the city policy, there's really, there's not even a timeline. She just, she pointed that out to me. There's no timeline. She gave him thirty days. And so like, it doesn't happen very often, so I think that it should maybe be looked at and revised. So here's, here's some of the things that Megan and I discussed. Dangerous dog policy changes to be considered. The same owner having a history of raising multiple dangerous, dangerous dogs, each dog should not be given a free pass the first time. In my wife's situation, where that dog should have been removed immediately from the home and humanely destroyed as this was not Mr. Martin's, Mr. Martin's first occurrence of raising a dangerous dog. In the past, he has had one get out and kill Marshall Nelson's dog a block south of his place. Had his entire property been reinforced after the first occurrence of a dangerous dog, Megan very well may not have been attacked. To my knowledge, nothing had been done after the first incident as, as a dog that was deemed dangerous died while it was being spayed. Also with that, with the reinforced residence, the multiple occasions where these dogs, where these Great Danes are, are out free roaming the neighborhood could very well be reduced. But currently how the policy states is the one that, that bit Megan is the only one that is deemed dangerous. So the only one that has to be caged. And so in that policy, there's a, you can put two feet of bar, two feet of channeling fence in the ground around the property or you can put a kennel in the back, the cage with concrete floor so they can't dig up. Well, Megan's is the only one that, that dog, that Gracie, she's the only one that's gotta be inside that cage. So the others are still, are still free to dig under the fence as Mr. Martin has decided to cage the one instead of put a channeling fence two feet in the ground to prevent the others from escaping by digging under the fence, which they are currently doing next to my brother-in-law's property. And then, uh, dangerous dog requirements, six dash one twelve, I think you guys have it. Section C currently states, the bell can be walked by anyone of nineteen years of age or older. I believe myself that the dog should only be walked by its owner and should be required to have a muzzle. Section F currently states, warning signs on the property where the dog is kept that are clear, are to be clearly visible from all areas of public access and to inform, inform persons that are, that a dangerous dog is on the property. That policy should, I believe that policy should read that these signs are posted on the fence and not on the ground. Multiple locations, possibly every fifteen foot, because in our situation, we have the signs posted, but basically hidden in two feet of bushes and hidden in a shadow and you can't see them from the sidewalk. Um, I also believe possibly the address of a new dangerous dog should be posted in a public, in the, in the, on the public media or in the newspapers. As I'm sure, as I am sure there are many parents that allow their kids to walk past this house or ride their bikes past this house to go to the swimming pool or go to, or go to school for the rest of the year. I mean, it's right there in the busy. That's how they get to the pool and that's how they get to school. And if these parents ain't driving by this house, they, how are they to know about this dangerous dog? Um, we as a family were very lucky in the situation that, that Megan, as a grown adult, was attacked and not one of my three boys or my two-year-old nephew that lives next door. That dog that attacked Megan would have taken a kid to the ground and her five pups at the age of eleven months would have followed them, would have followed up and attacked as their prey went to the ground. Um, after, this is, after an attack on a human or another animal, that dog should be immediately removed from the home or environment that it, that it got loose from or escaped from until the homeowner is in compliance with the city policy. That is not stated anywhere in our current policy. We just simply let the dog remain in the home and give the owner a very generous thirty days to comply to, to leaving. We give the owner a very generous thirty days to comply, leaving lots of opportunity for that animal to strike again. Um, this isn't early on the dangerous dog. This is on city limits. We currently have, we, we currently do not have any limit of the number of dogs one individual can have inside the city limits or any information on breeding dogs inside city limits. In this case, I firmly believe that all of these dogs are good dogs, as all dogs are good. It is one hundred percent the way they are raised. You just simply cannot raise seven fully grown Great, Great Danes in a ninety by thirty-foot backyard. When they see the light and they want to go run, that's when, when you see the light and they want to go run, when that happens, things happen, such as my wife's attack. They just, they got excited and they never even see the outside world, so they just bolted. We've all seen horrific stories and kids or even adults attacked and killed by dogs in other towns. That is my main reason for bringing this to the city attention about our policy that needs some immediate provisions. Hopefully my family's experience can be an eye-opener to those, to those of you on the board and we can make some much-needed changes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I gave you guys kinda copies of the current code that we had that defines what was a dangerous dog was and what those requirements are currently. Uh, we went through the animal control review board is actually the authority that does those appeals, which went through that process, um, last week. Uh, and upheld the decision of the dangerous dog, so it's, it's maintained. So the next step that, that happened with that, that in, or that incident there is they either follow the, the dangerous dog requirements, which is, uh, the maintained current licensing within the city. They gotta show proof of liability insurance and put us, or put the clerk on there as if it's gonna uh, expire, at least give us, so the entrance agency gives us notice. Uh, Stephen mentioned the dog cannot be walked or exercised off the property with an individual at least nineteen years of old on, on a leash. Um, the animals do have to be spayed or neutered, uh, so they do have to be sterilized as it has that requirement. And then they can be kept indoors or kept in a kennel that meets certain requirements. Now, kennels can be on a concrete slab, no more than one inch spacing, does have to have, uh, the same per lid on it, or if it's on earth, then it has to be dug in so many, two feet below grade. Uh, so it can't just be running out and up. A, a property fence won't meet those requirements of that, essentially, unless you roof the whole property uh, with that. Or it has to be kept indoor, so it's a, it's a four. So it's this or that in that situation. Uh, in that instance where they keep it inside, they have a kennel outside, technically it would need to be put on a leash, someone nineteen years of age to go from the house to that kennel. It can't just run loose in that backyard. Now, policing, that's its own, you know, thing to, thing to have to deal with, but that's cur, the current requirements that we have. The sign each is also on there. Sorry, I missed that one. So you do have to have the sign each. Uh, and that, it, it defines where it has to be visible from all areas of public access. Um, and then a, a black background or a high contrasting background to display that. So what we do when that decision's upheld to ensure compliance, Chief Baker or the animal control officer then go inspect that property to make sure it's in compliance. Um, if not, then it's, that goes into an offense and it's actually then a dangerous dog citation. And that goes through an impoundment piece and if they're essentially failed to comply, then that dog is, uh, either euthanized or can be relinquished to go outside the city limits pending the, you know, decision of the city or the court.
When the incident happened a couple of summers ago, when this same dog destroyed another dog, it's not the same dog?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the other, the other incidents, um, went through the process to get dangerous dog, needed spayed and ended up dying on the, at the vet's office during procedure. So it, I never complied because it never got that far or two to comply.
So the, the ones that are puppies then?
No, they're, they're ninety pounds, hundred pounds, they're nine, twelve pounds.
Yeah, we really need an ordinance. How many dogs you can, seven dogs, extremely great names of law dogs.
You're running, you're running a breeding kennel.
But it's not someone of her, yeah.
They're supposed to be gone at like eight weeks. I mean, I don't breed dogs, but I got friends that do and I believe it's like eight to ten weeks, these dogs should be gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then if we would have had to bottle up compliance on that one couple of years ago that died, we would have chain link into the ground. We'd have some reinforcement. I mean, we're, we got seven Great Danes. It pops up like that, they get excited, they go, it's not the dog, it's not the breed, it's the owner. And the owner is free to do what he wants because of our policies. I think the policy needs to be revised.
Was he given any kind of ticket for a dog, rather large or anything?
I, I don't know.
Citation for the, for my, I really don't know.
He was cited, he was.
They had multiple counts of that. The only thing that got dropped was a dangerous dog because it doesn't get a citation. This dog has to be deemed dangerous before it can actually get a citation of being a dangerous dog.
My question is, you all mentioned a, a timeline, um, and I'm, if I'm, let me know if I'm missing something. But there is a timeline in here. This is the dog determined to be a dangerous dog. Dog would remain impounded for up to ten days or until the owner has provided written proof to the city clerk that the owner is in full compliance.
I, sorry, I thought you were gonna.
No, 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 but.
I talked to Tracy about that and I asked her about that. She said that is only in the case that he is, uh, what did he file last week?
Oh, an appeal?
He filed an appeal. That was only in that case. And to me, that read to me as that dog should have been taken on the spot. I'm not an attorney. She is. I drive a truck for a living. She said it doesn't read like that to her. I thought the dog should have been removed by reading that, but that's where I think it's kinda, needs to be written a little better.
Who determines if the dog is dangerous or not?
The animal control.
The animal control.
No.
No, we call the state.
I usually do.
Oh.
So if it is an animal attack or, or something falls into that city ordinance or the state statute that follows that, we will cite and then the city attorney sends a letter to the owner deemed it dangerous and given that ten days for that appeal to comply.
But then if they appeal it, that is the animal control board that makes a, okay, okay.
This is where she, she gave him thirty days and said, she throw many shares, there's no timeline on this. I gave him thirty days to comply.
I believe there is a thirty day in the state statute for this, for the neutering and whatnot, but that's what she filed up. I believe is the thirty days to get the dog fixed and come in compliance.
Are, do you know of anything like that is in the, like the state statute that kind of covers that?
There is.
Okay. So would we even have to make an ordinance specific to it if it's already in the state statute?
You wouldn't, you would just have to alter the state, the city ordinance to follow that a little bit because there's other stuff in that state statute too.
Okay.
Have you re-inspected the house? I mean, since you, since, since, when I drew a bi, I had a hard time finding a little sign. It's in a little flyer pot out there in front. I didn't know, assuming you were aware of it, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Which I have concerns too, but it meets the criteria of it unfortunately. And he is in compliance on everything other than the kennel at this point.
Sure. So yeah, it's in the little verbage, yeah, but I don't know how big the sign, where it has.
It does say, yeah, it does tell you how big the sign is. Now, it's, it's not specific on the color, the color, yeah, other than the background has to be black.
Sure. I think it said here too, in all visibilities of the, uh, house too of it. So it was on the one side and I actually had to go around the block once because I couldn't.
There's three signs up there.
Oh, is there? Okay.
Yeah, there's three signs. I'm not gonna say that they're ideal. They're, they're not.
I only thought there were two and I've been by there a lot, so that tells you.
Can't say. I think we can all agree that the ordinance needs to be changed. Is it something the animal control board wants to leave the charge on and bring back to us next meeting, the ordinance?
Who's on the animal control board? Myself, Julie Proffer and Dick Markman.
And, and the animal control board's only authority is to review and reveal. Granted, I mean, they could.
I was trying to make less work for you. And I'm not a bull. No, sorry.
But it's a little, I guess, draft policy components or anything like that, but.
Make some changes to better align with some of the suggestions Stephen had and then like the state statutes.
But the state. It's a one-time thing with how many get out, that's what you can. Doesn't sound to me like it's a one-time thing because he already killed the poor guy's little dog.
That animal control board had, had that entire neighborhood sitting over here. I mean, there was more people here for that than tonight. Lots of concerned people in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood.
Oh, like he said, they walk by going to school. I got three of them a block.
Well, let's bring the entire ordinance to the next council meeting and let's start picking through it. And you need to pick through it. Let's update, let's get the state statutes and see if they've been modified since we, we had a date on here what this is.
Um, two thousand seventeen, I believe.
We started doing, we did this before with, that's what, we got about ten dogs in this community that you can't have. You had to register, you know, what I, I don't know. So we started doing that a long time ago too.
That's the nuisance thing.
Yeah, it's the nuisance thing. But I mean, we started, tried to modify that then because for some people that have those big, and then we got into pit holes and.
You still have pit holes.
Yeah, we, yes, I think there was ordinance that was specified.
There still is.
There's still, there's.
It's been, there's certain criteria keeping certain breeds.
It's very similar to the dangerous dog requirements, uh, but it does have some, some additional steps above and beyond, beyond that.
Well, we're adding maybe research, like the number of pets you can own as well, maybe.
There are other communities that do that.
Yeah.
In regards to this, some people do, they take care, some people.
Well, there's.
Yeah, I know.
Personal, one-on-one ownership. How many, one person. Maybe just now your lip service.
There's houses around was, I know one I can take. Seven dogs in that house do it. They never get outside.
That's, that's.
Terrible. Let's revisit the ordinance and let's bring it up to date. Let's get a copy of the state statutes. Especially with the dangerous dog thing. And I do have a problem with a dog with an owner that let a big Great Dane out and crushed the skull of the neighbor's dog, but was on a leash. And that was pretty tough and my parents themselves witnessed it and it was pretty traumatic for them. And they got a little dog up there that they take care of and so they were nervous about that. And this happens when it starts being human beings, that's just as bad as, not worse because you didn't do anything wrong. And it'd be different if you crawled over the fence or, you know, nine of these FedEx drivers, I had one of them talk to me once before about getting the crap scared out of them. There's no reason to have a big dog or any dog that's going to fight, doesn't do anybody any good. And I would have been for one for the fact that I would have suggested that it goes somewhere or be isolated. But if it had its rabies shot, that doesn't make you feel any better. It doesn't make the rest of the neighbors feel any better either. And I totally agree with the fact that, that enough's enough with.
Whether it's got a rabies shot or not, it's still dangerous. It's, you're going to kill it.
Rabies aren't gonna kill you. There's an impoundment for the rabies part of it too. So if it did not have a rabies shot, it would be, it would be an impoundment of death and it has to have a observation period.
There's a lot of steps. We.
Well, there's a lot of ordinances. We, we've run across a few of them tonight and we need to start up making, uh, fireworks and now dangerous dogs. So maybe it's time to start doing policy reviewing. As I was, part of us that, that we went with the, uh, ten dogs, whatever it is, that we just said that you couldn't have it falsely unless you registered and you paid the insurance and you had to have all the shots and they had to be neutered, spayed and that kind of stuff. We've gone through that before.
We're, we're coming around quite a bit. We've actually had quite a few ordinances that we've passed that haven't been codified yet. They've been published and put through, but we haven't really got them out on the website and, and drafted into the city ordinance. So I have been having some discussions with Dunn's office about, about that and they do, uh, have a proposal um, that they're gonna be presenting to be for going through and getting all that and really looking at city code from start to end, the entire. getting all that, and really looking at city code from start to end, the entire code itself, not just, just this, so. Granted, that doesn't stop this process way any means that could be codified, you know, into that process.
So if we, just say we change this a little bit, would that change Rick's on dangerous dog stuff, with this new stuff good for? I wonder if we just did the same day up to date if something ever happened again?
Well, they would still need to meet these conditions, so this is, this is a, an annual component, so that's got to be reviewed. We got to police that, we've got to deal with it on the licensing, ensure we have all those pieces in place, and then do the property inspection and all those.
So we don't, we can't say, okay, the dangerous dog bit the lady, was evidently dangerous. Do we have the power to go in and take the dog and take care of it? We don't have that power as good an ordinance?
No, you still gotta.
You gotta give him another out.
Uh, it's not necessarily an out. Right now, it's deemed dangerous if they kill a human being, if they inflict injury on a human that requires medical treatment. So that's provoked or unprovoked, it does not matter within that, that condition. Um, has killed a domestic animal without provocation uh, or has been previously determined as, as a dangerous dog by the Animal Control Authority, that, the Animal Control Officer in that instance. So that's, that was, that's what deems them dangerous, but.
And what happens if they're deemed dangerous?
What happens is they either have to meet the conditions that we assign, that you have to meet these conditions, or they, uh, can potentially get the dog up for adoption outside the city limits, uh, or they can euthanize the animal.
But there would have to be a second offense for any of that to happen, correct?
To, for like our authority to then, to just euthanize the animal, uh, would be the second offense. And out of that instance, that would be impounded and euthanized because it's now.
We're going to need to check out what else could be done, because she's all right, but what if it's a mental kid? It wouldn't bend those second.
A lot of what ifs, and that's.
Megan, you got your, you got your picture?
I'm sure. Do you have my email?
Uh, I should have.
Show a picture of it.
I got it right here, Megan.
You got it?
Second offense, by not having a plan, or the dog actually have to do something. And the city attorney, she told me if, if he doesn't comply, like, let's just say he didn't have his signs up, his signs were down, and chief goes by, sees the signs down, that right there says you can go take that dog. The second offense may not comply, or that, that's where the code needs some pre-biased, because it doesn't state none of that.
We're sorry this happened to you, Megan, but let's do some stuff to tighten the rules a little bit here.
I don't know, legally, do you have to have an option for an appeal? Because I have.
I'd have to review the, I'd have to review the state statute. I just would make an assumption there's some component of due different process, you know, for that, but.
But we're using the definition of if it killed a human being, if it inflicts injury. Why are we giving them the option to, well, but it's not dangerous. I just don't think that's necessary to give them.
I, I totally agree with you. I think once a violation, and any, I've got a picture of a set of ankle biter, if it bites somebody and breaks the skin and it's out of, if it's somebody else's yard, that's not.
I wonder if it was framed with the consideration of like, the dog has, on and on, like rehabilitation and like behavior training. I wonder if that's when it was, if that was, what was being considered when that was written?
I don't think anybody ever has anything here about doggy school in there. I just. Uh, only, only with the nuisance, uh, nuisance dogs, okay, that requires the good citizen, or AKC good citizen.
Yeah.
And, oh, please.
So like theoretically, like you could appeal that decision if something then deemed a dangerous dog, you know, you could have them theoretically looked at later and have it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't know what a dog is going around hitting up beside my fence and biting people.
I think the initial one, because it's not a citation as a dangerous dog, so that first interpretation is on the city. So it affords that appeal there to, that's the governing board, or the board that can then look at that appeal. Their testimony within the appeal is, is oath, so that's how it's, how it's defined. So they could, they can go through that process essentially outside of the, outside of the court.
Well, we'll do some, somehow.
Well, let's start by going through our city codes, and especially these things are coming up, fireworks, dangerous dogs, and let's start getting it fine tuned, so we can, uh, those who own dogs that are dangerous will know in advance. And I think tolerance needs to be zero personally.
Hundred percent.
You said, when the same owner, the same kind of dog attacked a neighbor's dog. My mom would leave the house for about four or five days with her dog, with our dog, scared to death, and rightfully so.
It's just a pattern that he has, it, you know, it's two dogs that he now has that, or did have, one attacked a little dog, this one attacked me. It just shows the pattern of how they're raised. And I just think it needs to be brought to you guys' attention. I'm not saying change is going to happen immediately, but maybe something in the future to protect our city.
Laws are meant to be written, and that's what this body does, is brings them up to date when there's incidents that haven't happened, and we're going to do it.
As of current day, we have two dangerous dogs that are with this one. We only have one other. Most of the others, the owners have gotten rid of them or, or they've been euthanized. Uh, or just chosen to be euthanized.
Got any problems?
Yeah, so the process somewhat works, but.
I had one, and I lived my boy's house, and it was in my own pen, and it didn't bite, but it acted like it about the second time I got rid of it.
My last one.
I didn't want a dog.
All right, so let's, uh, let's bring it back with some, uh, all the amendments and all the, so we can study it, maybe we can bring up to date state statutes. Maybe we can have the Animal Control people in, maybe they can go through it, find a little time to tweak it themselves, and maybe make some recommendations to this board, this council, so we can protect our community against dangerous dogs.
That's it, the end of the.